Out of both of the cars the other night. So you put gas in it and it still wouldn't really, it wouldn't do anything. So we called a mechanic and the mechanic come over today to look at it. Somebody took every fuse out of the fuse box inside of the car. Every single fuse from our fuse box.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are live.
Thank you, Josh.
But if someone barks, he would look outside. I do. I don't have to, I just look at the camera.
Logan, how are you tonight?
I'm good, how are you guys?
You look good.
Oh, thank you. How is everybody?
You got a beautiful smile, you seem like you're happy at Sunnyside.
I am just busy, 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 busy. I'm working on their budget right now while I'm doing this at the same time.
A lot more than I wish we had that budget.
It's a lot more work too, though. What was that?
Attorney.
Jamie Attorney. Hi, Jamie.
Yes.
For short, yes.
Josh is Mark, is Mark there?
No ma'am, not yet. But he's, he's set up as a panelist, so he will just pop in whenever he decides to log on, so. You'll see, you'll see him on the screen just like the rest of us.
Okay, thank you.
I'll wash it every night now. We went to Norm, children, children's, they had a new brand new, they. The Apple Theater. They donated, what do you call it?
Dedicated.
Dedicated. There's a nice, there's a lot of people there. There is a lot of people there, it's really nice.
Commissioners from Yakima County. Mayor.
Their honey court was there, cattle. And that, that sign is really nice. Over by the farmers' clinic where they have their, their stairs. And the sign is very, very good.
Fine with me.
But it was nice, it was live. It was really nice. And it was all ugly, 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 outside windy. The minute we started, the sun come out, it was just so beautiful, huh? It got really warm, I mean like. Oh, is that right?
Okay, we'll go ahead and start this city council meeting for Tuesday, October 26th, 2021, at seven o'clock. Thank you, we'll take a moment of silence and let's just remember our, our pal Norm Childress. First time I met Norm, we would, I had went to a meeting, in my very first meeting in Olympia. And Norm said, ma'am, map, then, sit down here next to me. So I come sit down and he says, let me give you a word of advice. He says, always wear your boots and always have a shovel, because crap gets deep in our, in our line of work. And so I just want to remember him tonight and, and all the good that he's done for, not only Grandview, but the whole valley. Thank you, Roque.
Councilmember Sutel. Councilmember Gorno.
Here.
Councilmembers Avala. Councilmember De La Fuente.
Oh, I'm sorry, is there any visitors' comments? Do we have anybody on the line?
No ma'am, we don't have anybody on.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second motion. Oh, sorry, sorry. I make a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Correct. So I have a motion by Sophie and seconded by Diana, all in favor? Thank you, motion approved. So we, so do we have any visitors' comment? Did you, did you, did you want to say something tonight to the council?
No, I just wanted to check it out, because I've been here for like about 10 years.
Very good, okay, very good, alright. Awesome, I hope to see you soon again. Okay, so we'll go ahead and go on to the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I got a motion by Mark and it's seconded by Sophie, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, any opposed? Motion approved. We have no public hearing and we have no old business. So the new business tonight is one thing, and it's approval of resolution number 2021-17. A resolution appointing the district court as the city's municipal court. So right now we have, have a contract with the municipal court. And their judges need to appoint the district court and their judges to our city. That is on. It's the very last resolution, the very last page of the, of the agenda. So this is just a standard inter-local agreement between Yakima County and the city of Mapton for the municipal court services that they provide when people are arrested or put to jail.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2021-17.
Okay, I have a motion by Sophie, seconded by Tudy, all in favor? Mark, we didn't hear, are you?
Aye. Yeah, but.
Okay, thank you, any opposed? Motion approved. That was so fast. So now we'll go on to staff report. Jamie, the attorney, is there anything that you would like to, to talk about today?
Just a couple, just a couple quick, quick things. An issue arose with respect to the mayor's compliance with public facility uses and having to deal with printing of signs. I was tasked and investigated that particular situation. And determined that the signs that were posted by the mayor were not made on computers at the city that once made, they were copies made in a manner consistent with any other member of the public coming forward, so she had very few printed, paid the printing cost at the standard charge for the city. And that I found no, no violations in that regard. The second thing is I have received calls from Jamie Incney over the, over the last week with respect to review of a couple subdivision projects that were continued for further, further review, I agreed with that step. And there are some specifics that YB Cog is going to be looking into, and I believe there's a meeting tomorrow morning. Where there'll be a discussion about those issues. Standard, normal course situations. So those were two things that I was asked to look into, which I did since our last meeting.
Investigation. And he was heading a digging investigation, there was an alleged that myself, myself and two of my staff members was holding signs outside in front of City Hall. You were going to finish that investigation, there were some people you was supposed to talk to, get their names and talk to them, did you have a chance to do any of that?
I talked to, I talked to a couple people about that, being provided with names, people observed the allegation. I was not provided with any names to investigate. My, my review and my investigation is, is I found the last time that there were not city employees holding signs or participating in campaign activities during, during worker, working hours on behalf of the mayor.
You guys have any questions on that?
No.
Go ahead, Mark, you have a question, Mark?
No.
Okay, alright, thank you very much, Jamie Attorney, I appreciate that. Josh, would you, is there anything you'd like to say to the council?
No ma'am, not tonight, we will have our workout, cut out for us for the next meeting with the public hearing. But like I said, tonight I don't have anything to say, so thank you.
Thank you, Josh, Sylvia?
No, I don't know, thank you.
Yeah, just to let you guys know, we are starting to get ready for our fall season. Currently they are blowing out all those sprinkler lines in the city, in the city parks. We have scheduled water repair for the first full week of November. And following that, we have citywide water system flushing a second week.
So just, would you just let everybody know what happens when you start flushing, what comes back to us?
So part of the flushing is we're gonna. So part of the system flushing is we're gonna stir up the water lines. And the process behind that is you flush out and you scour the pipe. The amount of water with the velocity, feet per second, out of the hydrants. With the amount of time it takes for each line to get clean, we're gonna do all the end of the system hydrants first and then work our way inwards and it should hopefully take us about three days, but the customers will notice discoloration. There's nothing wrong with the water, it is just, you'll get a, a light reddish tint, sometimes it'll even be a little bit darker, brownish. But it's just temporarily, because it's all the sediment and everything that's been building up in the pipes over time.
So we would just like, just like now, if, if our water starts coming a little dark, we just turn the water on and let it flush through?
Yes, that is correct. The heaviest part of the flushing, we're gonna try to do early in the morning, so we'll be coming in early to, to get that done. Also, just to later, would you know, the parks will officially close down, members first. So we will be picking up some, some, some other stuff out there. And not doing as much maintenance anymore, other than picking up leaves every, every few weeks. And that's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
So you are gonna watch the rest of them already then?
It's been a lot, yeah.
When are you gonna be doing the flushing?
The flush, the flushing will take place the second week of November, it'll be in the water bill as well.
Do you guys have any, anything? Sophie, Diana?
I was gonna ask, I was still gonna have that thing.
Yes.
For sure.
Yeah, so, so we'll go ahead and move on to the mayor's stuff, so dump day is scheduled for December 4th?
December or November?
I mean, November, hold on, November, I'm sorry. November 6th. It'll be from nine to one o'clock. It's a Saturday. We could do nine to two, I mean. Okay, we can do nine to two, the five hours is fine, it'll be $10 as we agreed per dump. And it'll come on the water bill, just like it did the last time.
And no tires, no fridge.
No tires, no fridges, no appliances of any sort. No motors, FYI people, no engines. Okay, let's see, I just want to bring up a little bit, we are in the middle of our audit. And so we've, they have finished two of our three audits that were in the middle of this year. Our first audit was for January 1, we'll bring all this to you guys. But our first audit was for financial statements and federal single audit report. This was from the period of January 1, 2019 to December 31, 2019. I'm very, 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 very happy to say that. If you see right here in the bottom section. The bottom section right here, it says federal award findings and questions cost. None, what is, none.
Do we have that in our?
No. No, you'll.
It's on the website.
Yeah, it's on the website. But there was no, nothing found in our audit, which is like. We don't even know how many years back it's been, so they've done a second audit. This audit was for wording on financial statements and financial single audit. This audit was for the year January 1, 2023, December 31st, 2020. And once again, there's no reporting, so that means that we have a clean audit. There was one finding that we had, that finding has, is a finding that's been carried on. That is the two accounts that are upside down that we have in our city, that's been upside down for quite a while. And we're gonna have findings on those, I mean, a report on those every year until them two, them two accounts are back above board.
How much were those accounts?
I don't remember, one was like sewer, one was. Hey, Jamison.
Um, can you. Those.
Can you tell us the two, two things that are still upside down?
Yeah, it's the sewer and the street fund, as we've discussed before, because of the B Street project. Those funds are both in the negative, so as we've discussed, we're gonna keep getting a finding. We're basically overspending our, our available cash for approving expenditures in funds that have a negative balance. So the auditor reiterated what I have shared with you guys, which is that in order to stop those findings, we do need to do an inter-fund loan. Or something like that, but as we discussed before, you know, that potentially has the effect of needing to increase some sewer rates, so we had talked about that a little bit a few months ago. But we probably do need to revisit it as we start into this budget season, but I'll work with Josh on that and we'll, we'll bring you something. So I think if you want the raw numbers, I don't have them in front of me, but I believe the, the street fund is about $120,000 upside down. And the sewer fund is maybe 155, I think.
The street fund went upside down when the, in the middle of town here, the intersection got the input in it. Because that was, as everybody knows, come straight out of our pocket, that wasn't funded anywhere. And so that's why our street fund is in the hole, and it'll stay in the hole until we can get it out of the hole. The sewer fund, again, there was some projects done during the B Street project that wasn't funded. And so we, the city again paid for that. The street, the sewer fund, I'm a little bit more okay with. Only because there is some projects that pending out there. And if one of these projects do come to us and gets approved, that'll actually, the sewer fund will then be put in the positive. Because we have, you know, it's $4,500 to hook up for, is it the sewer's 45 and the water's 5, or the other way around? But it's 9,500 total, so if, if. To hook up water and sewer. And so if, if everything goes well and, and the plant, one of the plant projects come in. What they have to pay for fees will bring us out of the, out of the red in the sewer fund. And bring us into the green there, so that's what I'm, that's what the city. But I mean, again, we just have to wait and just see. But we knew in 2018, when I come in, that these were very, very upside down and we've worked really hard. One of them's already taken off, really close to $100,000 in debt that we've taken off of that, where it was like 201, I think it was like 2, 230 or 240 when I come in in 2018. And so now it's down, so they're all coming down, they're all coming closer to blue or to green, but they're still in the red. And so until we get this done, and like Jamison said, we can do an inner, inner loan, inner loan. And that's really what the auditors suggest that we do. But in order to be able to maintain that inner fund loan, we would have to raise the water rate or the sewer rate. And so that's been an issue with the council, that, you know, we don't want to do that, but without that happening, it's gonna be really hard to get us out. And, and that's exactly what the auditor said.
Ben, if we were to get these new homes that were in half the same.
Yes, it would help us a lot, not only would it help with the connections of the water sewer, but the amount of but really that's not coming to our table yet, that's just really all in the works. But, but really, I would really, really suggest that you guys, I mean, at some point we are gonna have to raise, the, the, we're gonna have to raise things up just a little bit. We haven't raised them for a long time, because it's, I mean, they got raised so hard. I mean, when we, when they were raised, you know, back in, what was it, 2014, 15, something like that, when our water bills like doubled? Almost, was it? Oh, see, I don't, see, that was important.
$2 each time.
So I mean, I think that, you know, that's why Jamison was talking about it, at the retreat, that one way we could do it is raise their bill, but then give everybody a credit. To compensate that raise, you know, give everybody a credit on their bills to compensate what we're gonna raise the rate. Does that make sense? Oh, you wasn't here, so you don't know what they have some talking about. But it is something that you guys really need to think over, because it, it would help us. And I mean, we're not talking about raising it, you know, five bucks, or something that's something. So yeah, I guess if that's all.
So Mary, you said you didn't have any findings from January 20, 20, December, but we did, but those were outstanding findings.
Yeah, that was.
So no new ones?
No new ones, nothing, nothing, nothing. Yeah, and they just told us, if you, if you do this inner fund loan, you won't have that finding either. So I mean, if, if we don't have a finding, findings is money.
I was gonna say.
Findings is that.
What did those findings cost us?
Don't know.
You don't know, oh, we haven't got those yet.
Just to clarify, the.
They're gonna charge us a fee.
Right, Jamison, you wanna, you wanna.
Just to clarify, they don't actually charge us, there's no fee for getting a finding, but whenever we go out for loans, those findings count against us in our interest rates and whether or not we qualify for money. So there's no upfront cost to getting a finding, it's just that it makes the city's financial position look less than stellar, and then we get more unfavorable rates for lending money and, and things like that.
So just go on to the Washington State auditors. And you can find all the audits in years, 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 years past, you would really be amazed at some of the audits that we've had in the past, pages and pages and pages and pages and pages and pages. Stuff wrong, so this is a very good day for our city, because it's literally the first time in a very, very long time that we've had a clean audit. And I want to thank my staff, right, I want to thank Jamison, I want to thank Josh, I want to thank Sylvia, all of them work really hard. And, and they do a really amazing job. And this right here goes to prove that, this right here goes to prove the staff that's right here right now is doing the job that we are asking them to do. And so I'm very proud to be there right now, and that we have an audit like this come across my desk. Jamison, you would, do you have something you'd like to report?
Um, no, I just wanted to make sure that we touched base on those audit findings, which you did. But I also was wondering if you guys might just give me a few minutes to make a couple of comments, I probably should have made them during the citizen comment portion, but if you don't have any objections, I was hoping you might just give me a couple of minutes to talk about staffing. If that's okay with you guys? Okay. I know I haven't been there as much lately, so I am kind of out of the loop. But I have heard a lot of things about potentially changes in council, changes in elected officials, and that those things may lead to changing in staff. And I just wanted to take an opportunity to say on the record that one of the. And I just wanted to take an opportunity to say on the record that one of the reasons that the city's financials and that the city's audits and things like that have been so messy in the past is because of staff turnover. And um, it is so, so, so important to maintain your staff that knows what's going on in the city. And um, I just, I hate to see the staff members that pour their blood and sweat into making this city run for unfortunately, much less money than people get paid to do the same jobs in other cities. Even, even our nearest neighbors, uh, even Wapato, even other, other very, very, you know, low income cities. Um, they work so hard and to hear the things that I've heard about um, the potential that, that people want to just, um, that some, that people are just saying that they're going to fire staff is really concerning to me. Um, just as somebody who has worked with the city, worked in your financials, seen every aspect of your departments, um, it doesn't do any particular employee. I say this while I love these employees that are here and I will say that I know that they work very hard. Even not considering these particular employees, you cannot replace the longevity knowledge, the institutional knowledge that you get with an employee that has even been here for one or two years versus brand new elected officials um, that come in. Uh, I think it would be very unwise to do something like that. And I just wanted to make sure that I, I know I'm not there very often, like I said, but I just wanted to make sure that I got an opportunity to really talk about this because I think it would be incredibly detrimental to the citizens of Mapton to lose staff again. Um, it is very hard to fill these positions with knowledgeable staff. And I think it, I think it would not be good for anyone in town to lose your lungs longevity, which isn't even that much, but your staff that you've had for three or four years now, that's a huge amount of time compared to some of the previous employees you've had in the last decade. Um, and those people have a huge wealth of knowledge to help the city continue moving forward and nobody's perfect. Everybody makes mistakes, but you can't train the knowledge that people pick up just by doing their job and just by showing up to work every day. And, and it's something that should not just be tossed aside. So thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to say that. I just, um, like I said, I've just heard some things and it's very concerning to me. Um, I don't want to see the city end up in the same type of position that it's been in before. I've worked too hard and the rest of us have worked too hard to get it out of that situation. And, you know, a complete changeover in staff would just be devastating, absolutely devastating from my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jamie. Mark, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Well, I guess with that, we will call this meeting good and we will adjourn at seven twenty nine.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.